...about the disease of addiction providing education and instilling hope to support a healthier community. Hope Shed Light's been around about three years now. And we are surrounded by awesome people. Hope Shed Light was the original brainchild of Ron Rizzetta, a dear friend. Ron's a commercial broker here in Tom River. He lost his son Mark in 2012. Shortly after that, he called. He called me. He called our other partner, Argo Prima. And he said, "Guys, can you help me create a nonprofit?" We both said, "Sure. What you got in mind?" Ron says, "Now, Steve, do you have any idea what was going on when you were dealing with your son? By the way, I lost my son in 2013. My son died one month after we started Hope Shed Light." He said, "Did you have any idea what was going on all those years ago? Where to go? What resources were available?" And I said, "I had zero clue. No clue at all." He said, "Neither." He said, "So how about we create a website to start?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "A website that lists resources, inpatients, outpatients, support groups, grief counselors, to give people an idea of what resources are there so that they're not floundering around like we did." I said, "That's a pretty good idea." And then this one from Ann Arbo said, "Yeah, that's a good idea. But how about if we also really talk about the disease of addiction? And we put it out there in the website? And we talk about one of the most important parts of it? And that's the family component. Because we all get sick, don't we? And codependencies, I won't use the word to came to mind because, okay, right? It's bad and it keeps people sick. So that's what our website does." And I said, "Look, we need a helpline." And I'll talk more about that. "We need a line that people can call because, yeah, we're gonna give them resources and we're gonna tell them where there's help. But if they call and leave a message and they don't get a call back, what good is it? And I'll talk about what happens with us because we're gonna answer, okay? And we're gonna help create a plan." That's really, I'm not sure what Hope Shed Light is. I have to give you a little background about me. And it'll be short because what we're gonna do tonight is to go over different aspects of the disease of addiction. And again, I'm surrounded by wonderful people. I'll introduce them as we go along. But we're gonna keep it about 15 minutes segments each. What I'd like you to do is to hold your questions, if you would, until the end so we can get through all this wonderful information that we have. And by the way, the stuff you're gonna hear tonight is only a bit of what we know because we're bright. We've got a lot more for you, okay? So at the end, we'll have a question and answer period, which is our favorite time. If anybody wants to stay later, because we have to be out of here about quarter to nine. If anybody wants to stay later, if anybody has some personal stuff they wanna share, we would love to share that with you. We'll stay, okay? But just so you know that I kinda know what I'm talking about with this. The first 12 years of my life with my son, his name is Mark. Wonderful. It was sports school and church and it was awesome, right? And about age 13, a switch was thrown and all hell broke loose in my house. There was massive pouring of drugs. All of a sudden, his attitude went from this sweet, loving, kind boy who was involved in things to a kid who was hard to recognize. He was mean to his wonderful mom and Denise who adopted him. He was mean to his little sister Emily, who was sweet at the time. And told me in no uncertain terms he had no intention after a while of doing anything I wanted him to do. Stealing, running away, not going to school, drugs all over the house. I said, "Stop that," right? Because that stopped that. And the grounding worked the first 12 years. But once that addiction kicked in, and I didn't know what I was looking at, it didn't work at all. As a man, and I'm an attorney by the way, I own Williston Gresson Law office here. I think I can fix things, at least they thought. But everything that I tried from 13 on did not work. And it was the most humbling experience of my life. Because the sicker he got, the sicker I got too. I was so focused on fixing him, I forgot about that wonderful woman, I forgot about my daughter. And I'll, you know, reemphasize that a little bit later. So what I ended up doing, just so you know, I ended up pressing charges against my son. I said, "Mark, you may not think I'm much of a dad, but I'm a legal attorney." My reasoning is that if I couldn't affect change, I needed to find somebody or someone who could. My reasoning is that if I told the judge what was going on in my home, the madness that was happening and why my son was using drugs, maybe he could be structured. Maybe the structure could be created that I couldn't create. Maybe his life would be saved. I had asked the judge in no uncertain terms to give my son a choice, jail or treatment. And she did. And as long as my son was structured by the legal system, meaning he didn't want to go to jail, he was doing pretty well, right? But at age 25 or so, when there was no legal system, he wanted to do things on his own. He never really felt that he had much of a problem. And it really broke my heart. I got this dad, you see. So in his twenties, mid-twenties, he overdosed four times that I know of. And he survived it. There was a different woman, young woman, by, you know, by the hospital bed kinda crying, carrying yet another child. We have eight grandchildren. And he couldn't afford one of them. I tell people I used to be six foot. This stuff really weighs death. He survived four overdoses and then about four, four and a half years ago, he hung himself. That'll make you cry as well. He was up in Newark, UMDNJ, and was clinically dead on the table. And the doctor said, "He's not gonna survive today, Steve. And if he does, he'll be severely diminished." So my prayer and my spiritual life soared. I said, "God, he's already diminished. Please make him whole and take him home." And we had the doctors take off the machines after 48 hours. And I watched the miracle. He survived that too. I brought him down to my house with a therapist friend and I said, "Mark, you are apparently hard to kill. How many experiences do you need before you say enough is enough? And as you hear, that's what has to happen. They have to be broken." Well, that got his attention, that hanging, because he actually saw God, as best as he could explain to me. What happened with my son, although he was trying harder the last two years of his life, he developed a seizure disorder from too much drinking and drugging. And he wouldn't take the seizure medicine. You know why? I got this dad. I can do this myself. He's fishing early one morning, September 15th, 2013. He had a massive seizure and rolled into eight inches of water. And he drowned. And that's how I lost him. And I miss him. But you know what he's taught me? Beside anger and resentment, the most important things he's taught me is joy. His life has incredible meaning. And even more so with these wonderful men here. Because what we get to do is to show you that even when we lose children, even when they stay sick, we can be healthy. And our goal in Hope Shed Light is to help you all get healthy. By sharing what we know, I need you to know that this addiction is in my family. If it's in my family, it's likely in your family. And if we all have the courage to stand up and share, we're gonna have a healthier community, won't we? As long as we learn to love in the right way. So we're gonna hear from people. And I'm very, very proud of all these people that exist. Let me introduce first, our first speaker tonight, is Mark Chotin. Mark received his master's degree in counseling from Seton Hall University. He's a diversified professional, active in the addiction recovery industry over the last four decades. He's developed and operated over 30 residential facilities throughout the U.S. with specialty programs for adolescents, youth, women, dual diagnosis, and families. Mark has been active in 12 self-fellowships for 40 years. And he's gonna talk about what this disease is. Mark?
Thank you. My name is Mark Alcohol.
Hey, Mark.
And I'm also a member of Al-Anon. I have 40 years of sobriety, although I entered AA eight years before that. So I started going to AA 48 years ago. And just now, celebrated 40 years. I wanna say about the founders that this is a wonderful organization and it's a tribute to these kids who lost their lives in addiction that they started this. And we wanna try to help families not only get help, but get the right kinda help and, you know, get the kinda recovery that's needed. Because a lot of times, people with this problem of addiction, it's identified, they go to treatment, but they don't get the right treatment long enough to that type of thing. And then, you know, the tragedies can occur. So one of the things, one of the missions, primary missions of Hope Shed Light is to help families get into a treatment plan and a recovery process that will hopefully work for them and for their loved ones. One of the things, I'm supposed to do signs and symptoms and disease. One of the good things to do, which one of my mentors taught me a long time ago, is look at the dictionary. So if you look at Wikipedia, it says, "Addiction is a medical condition that is characterized by compulsive engagement in rewarding stimuli despite adverse consequences." Okay, that's Wikipedia. Psychology Today says, "Addiction is a condition that results when a person ingests a substance, example alcohol, cocaine, nicotine, or engages in an activity, could be gambling, sex, shopping, that can be pleasurable, but the continued use, an act of which becomes compulsive and interferes with ordinary life responsibilities such as work, relationships, or health. Users may not be aware that their behavior is out of control and that it's also causing problems for themselves and others." For many years, a lot of things with addiction was defined by the withdrawal. But there's a lot of addiction that goes on way before you get into withdrawal symptoms. So that kind of, you have to be withdrawing. That went out the window decades ago. The dictionary defines it as a state of being enslaved. Alcoholics Anonymous uses that word also. "To a habit or practice or to something that is psychologically or physically habit-forming, as narcotics, to such an extent that its cessation causes severe trauma." So people have a difficulty when they stop. Now, the more scientific definition, which is the American Society of Addiction Medicine, which I'll also talk about more later, really, this has been defined as a primary chronic brain disease. So this is a disease, addiction happens up in the brain. Addiction is a primary chronic disease of brain reward, motivation, memory, and related circuitry. So it has to do with the reward system in the brain. Dysfunction in these circuits leads to characteristic biological, psychological, social, spiritual manifestations. So when we're looking at what are the symptoms of this illness, it goes in those four quadrants. You look at the social, you look at the psychological, you look at the spiritual. This is reflected in an individual pathologically, pathologically, like to the death, pursuing reward and/or relief by substance use and other behaviors. So they include not only the substance use, but the other behaviors. One of the hardest things to arrest in addiction is gambling addiction, for instance. That's one of the toughest things to treat. Also, eating disorders are very tough to treat because you have to kinda walk that tiger three, four times a day. So substances and activities, you can stay away from food. You have to kinda, have to eat. So it makes it a little harder. Addiction is characterized by an inability to consistently abstain, impairment in behavioral control, craving, diminished recognition of significant problems with one's behavior and interpersonal relationships, and a dysfunctional emotional response. So again, we see in major life areas dysfunction and problems that emerge. Like other chronic diseases, addiction often involves cycles of relapse and remission. And that's one thing that we see with this. This is not, it's more like diabetes, cancer. It can keep coming back if it's not kept in remission. And that's one of the problems with addiction is, is it's not treated in one episode. It needs to be, you know, "I'm a recovering alcoholic addict my whole life. I'm in remission, but I could go right back to it tonight. And, you know, it would be worse than when I started." Treatment or engagement, without treatment or engagement in recovery activities, addiction is progressive and can result in disability or premature death. I wanna, there's a famous guy in the treatment industry who passed away a few years ago. His name is Father Joseph Martin. And he had the chalk talk on alcoholism. And he said, "Whenever alcohol or drugs," and this is really the simplest one to take away, "whenever alcohol or drugs is interfering or causing problems in a major life area like health, family, vocation, social, legal, interpersonal, then alcoholism or addiction is present and is a problem." So a lot of people try to redefine things or complicate a cup of coffee when it's pretty obvious that the person has not a good relationship with alcohol, the substance, or the activity. AA alcoholism is a physical allergy of the body coupled with an obsession-compulsion of the mind that causes the person to lose control and drink, you know, to the point of harmful consequences. There's different signs and symptoms for young adults and adolescents. You'll see a change in friends, you'll see a change in school, you'll see a change in their grades. You might find an attitudinal change. You might find paraphernalia in the room. There's a lot of different things that you can look for. And there's a lot of different pamphlets that show you all that. But I think the worst thing about addiction is, now let's talk about the family. The family members are really a part of what keeps this thing going because we go into denial. The addict is addicted to the substance and the family becomes addicted to the act. And in doing that, they go into different forms of the same thing. Denial, delusion, okay? Enabling, calling it something else. Because of the shame and stigma involved, this often goes on far longer than it should because we all wanna call it something else. In fact, it's more popular to have your kid have a mental health problem than it is to have a substance abuse problem. In fact, a lot of treatment centers say they're even changing the name of what we're doing, okay? So that it doesn't have to be called, you know, "My son is going to an academy." You know, my, 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 seriously. You know, they have empowerment issues, that kinda thing. So I can say, "Little Johnny is away on a camping trip in an academy, trying to mature and do that." So I don't have to say, you know, "Little Johnny was shooting heroin and I had to get him out of town to save his life." So there's a lot of easy ways to do, you know, the signs and symptoms. I think when you're looking and you're not trying to call it something else, it makes it a lot easier. And one of the things we do with all medical problems is just put that person in front of a professional that can make a diagnosis and evaluation. Take some history and look at the whole picture. It's not that hard to figure out. For instance, if I say to you, "We are concerned that some of your symptoms are, you know, from a brain tumor and we think you might have cancer. The brain, God help you." The first thing you're gonna wanna do is what? Go to the doctor, get an X-ray. You're gonna check this out up and down, okay? The first thing when you say to an alcoholic or a drug addict, "We think you might have a problem with addiction," what do you think they do? Absolutely not. There's something wrong with you, they attack you. So sometimes you can tell within five minutes the way they defend. Like if you have a problem, why would you be so interested in not knowing you have a problem? That's because they're very invested in protecting the drinking and the drugging. So a professional is very helpful in those instances. Are you watching the time? Because I know I lost, I got two minutes, okay? And I'll be back up later to talk about, you know, treatment a little more. But so I think everything in healthcare starts with a diagnosis and assessment and trying to find out what's going on. And there's plenty of people, certified counselors, there's different professionals that can do that. And then sometimes you have to kinda watch for a while and see what else happens. Because you have to remember that the alcoholic and addict have a disease that tells them they don't have a disease. And not only that, they think drinking and drugging is the answer to their problems, not their problem. So they're gonna protect that. And they will attack you as a family member. They'll do a lot of things. And one of the areas that helped a lot of people over the last 30 or 40 years is the industrial alcoholism programs, the employee assistance programs that happened at work. Because an addict and an alcoholic will do things to protect their paycheck they won't do for God and country or anybody else. So, you know, one of the best programs in the United States that has the best results is for physicians, okay? They not only have to go into treatment for 90 days or longer, they get tested for the next five years. And they have very close monitoring for two years. And guess what? They have the best results. The pilots, anytime you have leverage and you keep it over a longer period of time, you get better results. And we'll talk about that a little more in terms of treatment because one of the things today is, is people can't access good treatment with their insurance cards because the insurance companies are trying to kick them out right away. You know, or they're trying to put them at the wrong levels that are cheaper and that kinda thing. So I'll talk about that a little bit later because that's one of the key things to try to navigate through. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mark. Our next speaker is my partner, Argo Prima, co-founder of Hope Shed Light. He's a certified recovery coach and a member of various self-study fellowships for over six years. Argo has firsthand experience with the disease of alcohol and drug addiction, both as a son and a father.
Hi, everybody. So I'd like to follow Mark if you're me. Because I'm just a dad and I was a son. And guys like him helped me get better and keep working on me today. My experience with the disease of addiction started when I was 10, 11 years old. I had a mom that struggled with alcohol and barbiturates and, you know, coming from a family that had an older brother that kinda decided that he was gonna live with his grandmother when this was happening and a father who worked a lot. I was that kid that was looking behind the plants and emptying vodka bottles and filling them with water and trying to make dinner and do laundry. So the codependency for me was learned at a really young age. And I had no idea what the word meant, but I knew that if I could make her feel better, maybe I would feel better. And I kinda morphed into this grown man with this, you know, codependency issue that I didn't know I developed when I was very young. And then I was blessed with a son that struggled with addiction who's in recovery today and, you know, got to see what it looked like from a father's perspective. And I'm here to tell you, tonight it was totally, totally different. You know, as a son, you felt some responsibility. But as a father, you totally felt that it was yours to cure, yours to manage, yours to follow. And, boy, that's a tough road to follow. And, you know, I'm supposed to talk about know the signs and the codependency. When I was thinking about know the signs, I mean, Mark touched upon what they are. I mean, for me, you know, 90% of know the signs is behavior. You know, the attitudes, the lies, the being secretive, losing interest, pushing the people that were closest to them away. And then, you know, all the other things that come along with it as it starts to grow. I think one of the things that needed to happen to me was I needed to be so sick of watching him be sick that I needed to go get some help from some people that understood the disease a little bit better than I did. And, you know, when I walked in into the rooms of fellowship, the first six months were brutal. People were saying things that I just couldn't accept. I didn't understand why I was in a room when I was healthy and I was a good man and I didn't have anything to do with my changing. I just needed, you know, the person in my life to change. And what I slowly found out was that because my life, because my loved one's life was unmanageable, my life was more unmanageable. So here I am, I'm a father to other children and I am a husband and I'm a, you know, a brother and a dad and a boss and all those things. And I sucked at all of them because I was so filled with fear and anxiety and obsession that 90% of my whole day was spent, whether I was physically at my desk, it was worrying about what something, you know, what someone else was doing that I had no control over. And I guess the gift of the program and recovery is that although you come to the doors because you're broken and desperate to fix the person that's so sick in your life, you start to find that you're the one that you can change. And because you start to change, your actions start to change. The way you look at disease starts to change. And by some miracle, they begin to change. Especially in my case because, you know, I was that guy. Maybe if I just get him out of this ticket, maybe if I just help him with this, maybe if I just pay this fine, maybe just one more thing, I can clean everything up and he won't have the pressure of this. And I did that for a little bit. And my marriage was suffering. My relationships with my other children were suffering. And I gotta tell you, the worst time of my night, the worst part of my day was when I had to go to sleep. Because I'm like a workaholic kind of guy, so I could somehow manage to stay working and not think about this as much. But as soon as I got home and that light went down and it was a little bit quiet, all I had was myself. And the sad thing for me is, while I was doing it, I knew it wasn't the right thing to do. But I was just searching for some way to feel better. And this was all I knew. So as I went through the process of recovery for myself, I started to understand that I needed to find some things for my, you know, to feel better about me. And along the way, if, you know, my loved one could find it, that'd be great. But that wasn't the point of the whole, you know, codependency, you know, recovery for me. I had some notes here just to kind of give you some feelings of what I was feeling with. You know, living in fear, obsession, angry, short-tempered, lost interest, family members, friends, activities, sleep, appetite, like food, forget about it, isolation, denial, pity. Very, very defensive. And became so filled with self that, you know, the people that weren't affected by this disease in my life that had joy, I felt resentful to them because of their joy. And what an awful friend or brother I would be, you know, to live in that. So, you know, being emotionally dependent on someone else's recovery, you know, at the expense of my own health and quality of life, wow, you know? Like if you would tell me that from the outside, that that would be something that I would become, I would deny it to the day. I'm standing here in front of you. I have a couple other things. I learned to love a person and hate the disease. That was a huge moment for me. Because I hated everything. Everything about it, everything that, you know, had become. But I do understand it now. And that helped me work on me. And that really helped me. This probably is the hardest one. Knowing when I was helping was keeping them sick. You know, really, everything that I was doing, everything that I, as a dad, I had to unlearn. And I did that. And God knows what's gonna happen, but I gotta tell you, the program, what Hope Shed Light is, the recovery that we have in this room, together we will be better for it. So thanks.
That was awesome. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, very dear friend, Dory Rachel. Dory Rachel is a woman with over 30 years of recovery. And has been working in the fields of prevention, treatment, and advocacy for over 15 years. She believes in the progression of recovery and hopes to provide others with knowledge of the benefits of working toward change and personal recovery. She's currently exploring alternative healing modalities in recovery as well. Dory's gonna talk to us about acceptance.
You're not alone.
You're not alone, so we're gonna talk about it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Argo. I am stunned by the number of people in this room. Absolutely stunned. And I've been in this field for a long time and been at different presentations. And to know that Hope Shed Light is bringing information to you all in this room in the way that they are with anecdotes stories, personal stories, to try and reach out to all of you that showed today to let you know that in fact, you're not alone. And for whatever reason that you walked through the door, we're here to be of service to you. The topic that I was given had to do with being alone. And in the disease of addiction, you can take the individual who has addiction, say this is the addict, this is the family member. The addict, he starts to feel as if he is alone in his using. He starts to create his own reality. He starts to justify what he does. And a person who is watching what's going on, the family member, watches this addict starting Equally, there's a spiral in the family member or the loved one. The addict says, I'm not that sick, leave me alone, I got this, I'm still working. You know the drill, right? You've heard it all. And the family member watches this and starts to bargain. They start to think, if I say this, he'll do that, if I do this, he'll do that. And you start to live in your own head, like Argo said. You start to think, what can I do or say or be that will help this person change and become whole and healthy again? And the addict is saying, just get out of my grip, right? So both end up in the disease of denial part of addiction, denial and aloneness. And it creates this own illness of its own self, the disease of denial starts to work on itself. And we start to isolate. We don't want to tell our best friend that we're sick and we can't stop drinking. We don't want to tell, if you're over here, we don't want to tell our best friend, our neighbor, that my kid is using heroin. You don't want to talk about it. So you live in this really awful, awful, lonely place. So Hope Sheds Light comes along, knowing this, they know the hell of it, they know what it's like. And all of you that came out today, you're not alone. We are not alone. I happen to be a part of the 12-step program. I did not get better from being in this one. I was really good at being an alcoholic. I was really sick. I tried to get clean and sober in nineteen seventy-five, and it took me ten years of trying to stop drinking, and I did not stop drinking until nineteen eighty-five. And I was driving my family crazy. I was really, really sick. And when I hit a bottom, I had to surrender to a we program. I had to let other people in and listen and surrender myself to start to change. Equally, I'm in Aronon because I'm a family member. And the same thing had to happen for me in my life, in the work that I do. I had to get better from that. You know, I had to surrender to other people to help me guide through. I work with a lot of people who are struggling with addiction, so I have to work on myself so I stay healthy. Again, it's a we thing. So I'm more than thrilled to be part of this organization that is addressing the needs of the family, addressing the needs of the pain of the aloneness, and bringing education, bringing support, and starting to do some cutting-edge work that's just very, very needed. So I thank you all for coming today. I really appreciate it, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dory. We move back to Mark.
Treatment options?
Treatment options, that's what he's gonna talk about. He's the man, thank you.
This is a difficult subject because it's so hard to get good treatment today, and a lot of that's been changed. But what I want to do is just educate a little bit on the different levels so that people have a little more knowledge about what they are. And, you know, we're in one of the worst epidemics, we are in the worst epidemic in the history of the US. We have, it's on the news all the time now in a commercial, we have thirteen people an hour overdosing on drugs, mostly young people. If you want to put that in a context, you know how, you know, the, all the news and everything, I used to live in Newtown, Connecticut, you know where the school shootings were? Between Monmouth and Ocean County, every month, we have a Newtown, Connecticut amount of deaths just on overdose. Eighty percent of these deaths are from prescription drug abuse and problems. So we can like talk about the Mexican cartel, but the cartel is really the pharmaceutical companies, the prescriptions, the American Medical Association, everybody's giving out too many scripts all the time, and this stuff is very, very addictive, okay? Not everybody can become an alcoholic, but I can get any one of you in the room, give me about two or three weeks, and I can get you addicted to narcotics and pain medication, and that's what's going on. So we're losing our children in drugs. We have, the Vietnam War went on for fifteen years, we lost fifty-eight thousand people. We have a half a Vietnam War every year going on in this country that we're losing our young folks to overdose. So that's what's happening. Now, what are some of the treatment options? And I'll go in the order of severity so that everybody understands. The first thing is, is to get an assessment and evaluation, usually a professional that's licensed can tell you whether or not you have it or not. And sometimes that involves some collaboration, corroboration with the family because, you know how you can tell when an addict is lying? When their lips are moving, right? So you can't, and you don't want them to go in and just tell the story. The second thing would be private therapy and counseling, okay? So it's like seeing a private practitioner, and it could be any type of psychologist, psychiatrist. The only people that can dispense medication are psychiatrists and nurse practitioners. But sometimes they'll work tandem if somebody gets medication. So you have private individual therapy, okay? From there, you have what's called outpatient care, which is usually two, a few sessions a week in a licensed outpatient program. And then from there, you have what you call intensive outpatient, which is a minimum three or four times a week, and usually the sessions have to go three or four hours, okay? From there, you have, and I'll just say intervention at this time, a lot of people need the help of a professional to do an intervention to get somebody into treatment. You've all seen the shows and the drama and everything else, but it actually works. And a lot of people have gotten into treatment because of planned interventions that help break through the denial and the delusion to help somebody access treatment. After that, I'll say the next level of care is detoxification, and usually that's three to five days, okay, which is not a lot of time. A lot of people think that going to detox is treatment. It's only first base, you're not hearing, nowhere's near home plate, and, you know, all that does is get the drugs out of the system, but they're still very foggy. A lot of addicts haven't seen the ball since the kickoff for two or three or four months, so they're not in their right mind for quite a while. This is very disturbing to the brain and very agitating to the nervous system, these drugs. That's why they get high, it's a poison to the nervous system. A next thing I would say would be detox and stabilization. We used to detox people for fourteen days. We'd detox them, get them stabilized, and get them ready to go into treatment. That was not that long ago. Detoxes were ten to fourteen days, that's what you call detox and stabilization. Most of the people carrying people to psych hospitals get a little detox and stabilization. And the reason most of them end up in psych hospitals is they can take any insurance plan. The problem is, is once you leave there, you don't usually get to the right places, and, you know, that takes the crisis out of the environment for the insurance. Then you have inpatient residential, they're usually in a residential setting, those are usually anywhere from four to six weeks, although sometimes you only get ten to fourteen days from your insurance company. But that's an intense level of care where, you know, you're there for fourteen days, or hopefully thirty days. The next, the next level of care is what you call extended care. That's being in treatment, okay, with treatment professionals and treatment programs for ninety days or longer. And sometimes that's done with both an outpatient or a partial license, but you're in a protected environment in a extended care home while you're, while you're in treatment all day, but it extends the amount of time to ninety days. When I first started in the business thirty-five, thirty years ago, forty years ago, if you were on alcohol and drugs, you automatically went for six weeks to ninety days, and the insurance companies paid for it, okay? When you were on drugs in New York State fifteen years ago, you went to treatment for twenty-four months, eighteen months, they were screaming bloody murder when it got down to twelve months in therapeutic communities and stuff like that. But one of the things that we've known over the years is the longer you're in a protected environment, the better your chances are of getting better and having the nervous system and the brain clear up. The next, the next level of care would be long-term treatment. And to me, long-term treatment is anywhere from six months to eighteen months, and a lot of people actually need that, but don't get it because they don't have the funds and some of those programs aren't available. But some people, it takes them six months for the brain to clear and the nervous system to calm down before you even have a person that's available to learn what they need to learn to rehabilitate themselves, okay? That's, that's long-term treatment. And then after that, you have both aftercare and now come the sober homes, okay, where you've had treatment, you've had extensive treatment, now you can go in a supervised sober home where somebody's watching you and helping you stay sober with other people doing the same thing, okay? And, you know, after that, there's another step-down level like the Oxford Homes or anything else that are not, they're sober homes, but they're, it's not a halfway house, it's not supervised programming, but they have sober people living there, but sometimes you have the inmates running the asylum, you follow me? So, you know, you don't necessarily have who you want helping. Now, guess, guess what the insurance companies like to do mostly? Mostly you go from detox to what? A sober home. A sober home. So all those steps I just laid out for you, a lot of times, nobody gets to those. And that's one of the problems. That's why I'm trying to tell you, that's really not treatment, that's not enough treatment, okay? And I, you know, we're not here tonight to fight City Hall and get into all of that, but I think it's important to know, and we're gonna try to talk to people about, here's what the patient needs, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what a plan that might have a chance to work in recovery looks like, what do you want to do? You know, what can you forward, what is your insurance gonna cover? And really look at that. Because when you just call the phone and somebody's trying to hustle you into a bed, your son or daughter may be out of that bed in ten days in Florida, and they're sitting there and you're going, gee, I had a chance to help, and now they're back out on the street. This stuff takes a while to get, it takes a while to get better, okay? And you have this term today, and don't get me going on this, but this medic, medically-assisted treatment it's called.